All right, it's 5:30. We're going to call this January 6, 2025 Norfolk City Council Meeting to Order. I'd like to inform the public about the locations of the Open Meetings Act posted in the council chambers and accessible to members of the public. Please stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Beckman.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Hildebrand. Mayor.
Before we get to the approval of the consent agenda, we are asked to remove items number eight, 22, and 23. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second. Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And I'll also look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
Kill moved.
Second.
Isn't it discussion now?
To remove?
So the motion will need to be to move eight, 22, and 23 to the consent agenda and remove number 27 completely from the agenda.
Do we need that motion? Can someone give that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda adding items number eight, 22, and 23, and removing item number 27.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
So that will take us to item eight off the consent agenda as the first one, and there we would look for a December sales report, sales tax report from Randy.
We need a motion and a second.
Sorry, I'll take a motion for the consideration of December sales tax report.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, Randy?
Yeah, not good news, as you can see on the sales tax report. It's up on the screen also. This is the third month in a row of decline. Sometimes they'll have a significant decline in one month, and you'll see a big bump up next month. And first month this happened, I hope we'd see the same thing. That's usually when somebody pays their sales tax later, major payer. But we're not seeing that. I've been going back and looking, and as you can see, we're down over 9% year-to-date, and same with budget variance, over 9% decrease. I went back to the Department of Revenue website. They've got information on there regarding sales tax remittances, and we're not alone in having sales tax declines these three months. For instance, in this month, the state as a whole, looking at what was remitted to cities, is down similar to us, about 12%. Most of the major cities look like they've been down. Some of them are up. For instance, let me pull up that spreadsheet. Bellevue is down 20%, Columbus 4%, Fremont 8%, Rand Island 14%, Hastings 13%. Kearney's an exception. They were up over 17%. Lincoln's down almost 2.5%. And that just kind of follows through. Nebraska City down 14%. So I'm not quite sure what's going on. Maybe something with the ag economy. I think crop prices are down. Maybe that's affecting things. Just not sure exactly what is going on because we don't get the detail on our sales tax. The main thing I can tell you is we're not alone in Nebraska. The other cities are seeing similar decreases, and that's for all three months.
So do you think 2024, just looking at that comparison chart, they do look like it was probably a pretty good year in 2024, where 25s may be reflecting 22 and 23's numbers a little closer?
Yeah, if you look at that, that's exactly what you're seeing there. And like I say, that's similar numbers to what we're seeing around the state. So maybe we've had some good years, and now things are getting closer back to normal nationwide. Retail sales were up, but that doesn't appear to be the case with what's happening in Nebraska.
Any discussion? Anybody got any input on that?
The sales tax report marks the third consecutive month of substantial declines in sales tax revenue. I don't remember the last time we've had a similar decline. The fiscal year-to-date decline is $286,709, which calculates to 9.28% below budgeted revenue. If this trend continues for the remaining nine months of the fiscal year, your sales tax revenue will be 1.1 million below budget. On top of this decline in sales tax revenue, you had a very significant unbudgeted expense of approximately $1 million, including benefits and estimated legal fees for the police settlement. I know it was stated during the council meeting that this money would be paid from fund balance. As you all know, fund balance is not a pot of magic money. It's simply tax dollars that are carried forward from year to year. The council has been trying to build up fund balance to the GFOA-recommended 16%. The settlement money will be paid from tax dollars and must be replenished. If you seek to replenish the fund balance for the million-dollar settlement expenses and cover the $1.1 million sales tax shortage, you'll need to raise property taxes by approximately $2 million next year. That would equate to a 29% property tax increase. The other option is to cut spending and reallocate funds. If the sales tax trend continues into the 25-26 fiscal year, and you anticipate a 2.5% cost-of-living increase for staff, the budget deficit then would balloon to $4 million over two years, assuming no spending cuts. If the sales tax revenue decline slows and sales tax come in at just $1.25 million below budget for the current fiscal year, and you seek to rebuild fund balance by only a quarter of the settle amount each year for the next four years, this still adds up to a $500,000 shortfall at the end of this fiscal year, and a $1.5 million shortfall for fiscal year 25-26, again assuming a 2.5% cost-of-living pay increase. This would still result in a significant property tax increase if spending cuts are not made. I urge you to take action now to analyze and adjust your spending to reflect the settlement costs and the reduced sales tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
You want us too aggressive?
If you want.
No, I appreciate the comments, and Mr. McKenzie's absolutely correct. And I think in, just as we've done in past practices, I understand what the city's done historically is we've always revisited all expenditures when we reach a point like this. Today, I did send an email out to all department and division heads to schedule a meeting that we're planning to have early next week to talk about this very issue. The first place we'll turn to is the capital improvement plan, and the projects, equipment, different things that are on there, to get everybody in the same room to talk about different ideas for where we want to turn to first to try to mitigate some of this risk. And I would agree 100% at the end of the day, this is all about fund balance, and I don't disagree with anything that's been said. So I want to just reassure the public and the council that this is something that's at the top of our list, and we are going to be meeting and proposing any of those recommendations from staff to council through those appropriate processes that the city's historically followed as well in the past. So we are going to be having those conversations.
I would ask that when you get done with your special meeting, that we call a special work session of the council to go over that in public, not to vote on anything, but to go over it all and have a special work session on that.
Absolutely, and I think major issues like this absolutely warrant a larger discussion with council and the public for that.
Any other discussion on this topic? Okay, we still do need to approve that, so I will ask for a vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, next item, I will look for a motion to consider the approval of the purchase of one Bandit 90 XP 9-inch capacity wood chipper from Bobcat of Omaha with the Sourcewell contract for the amount of $32,234.40. Nate, if you could.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second.
Now, Nate.
Getting a little quick. There we go. In light of the conversation that we just had, I think these two items would be good to wait until after we've had our meeting and discussion about our capital improvements and look at our priorities. These items are, you know, are important. I do want to reiterate that some of our maintenance costs have gone up $12,000 to $14,000 over the last two years to maintain our equipment. So, I mean, we need to have a continuing replacement program or the costs continue to go up to maintain that equipment. So that's why we have these items on here, but I think it would be wise to look at what items might be more important this year ahead of these before we move forward.
Nate, do you think that we could get back to bringing this to subcommittee with Parks and Rec Subcommittee?
Absolutely, yeah.
So we all kind of understanding what this is?
Absolutely, yeah.
Start having those meetings again?
Yep.
All right, thanks.
So Nate, just for clarification, are you looking to have this tabled or removed from the agenda for consideration?
Removed, I guess.
The easiest and cleanest way to do this would be to vote this down.
Yeah. That's fine. Both items, the next item as well.
Okay. Anybody else have any further discussion on this one? Okay, so we actually are looking for a vote on this one, I guess, too.
All council members present voting in opposition, motion fails.
That does bring us to item number 23. Even though we wanted it on the same, we'll separate those, so I will look for a motion of consideration of approval of the purchase of One Field Pro 6040 from Midwest Turf and Irrigation with the Sourcewell contract for the amount of $33,365.20.
Oliver, for consideration of the approval?
Second.
Have a second, and any discussion on this one at all? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in opposition, motion fails.
Now move to the regular agenda, and item 25, consideration of resolution number 2025-3, approving a sidewalk waiver requested by Steed LLC on property located approximately 1/8 mile west of South 13th Street and Monroe Avenue.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number 2025-3.
Second.
And Val, can you help us with this one?
Yes, thank you. So I've brought up here so you can tell which property we're looking at. So this is 13th and Monroe. Deet's Furniture is the southwest corner, and Love's Truck Stop is the northwest corner. And so you'll see the highlighted piece of property that we're talking about here. I also have the floodplain line on because that somewhat makes a difference because the hatched area is actually the floodway, and so nothing can be built in the floodway. That's the first flush of flooding. And then you move into the floodplain, which is the blue. And so the property owner desires to put a storage unit back here along this area here, and since there will not be any development towards the west because of the floodway, you can't build in it, and a storage unit does not produce really any foot traffic necessarily, they are asking for a sidewalk waiver with this build. And the owner is here if you have any questions.
And there are no adjacent sidewalks to this property?
The closest would be across Monroe because this is Love's Truck Stop over here, and this is your crossing of 13th Street, whereas you don't have the sidewalk built down in that southwest corner to connect to, to cross 13th Street on the south side of Monroe.
So building that storage unit, they'd still be required to pave their apron into the property coming off a paved road?
Correct.
So no request waiver for that, just for the sidewalk?
Right. I can actually show you. I think it went the other way. So this is what they're essentially proposing, that this is their building, and then there's the 25-foot paved apron in front of the storage units, then kind of the center area being gravel within the apron so that you can knock off the gravel on that before you go onto the paved road.
Correct. Thank you. Anyone have any discussion on this? Any public input? Seeing none. Move to Planning Commission report, please.
On December 17, 2024, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the waiver of subdivision requirements submitted by Steed LLC. The waiver of minimum subdivision sidewalk requirements is requested from those set out in Chapter 23-42 of the City Code of Norfolk on property located approximately 1/8 mile west of South 13th Street and West Monroe Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the sidewalk waiver request with a 7 to 0 vote.
Thank you. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution number 2025-3 is adopted.
Next item, I'll look for a motion of consideration of approval to purchase a replacement ambulance from Lifeline Emergency Vehicles for $366,433 for use by the Fire Division.
I would make the motion.
Second.
Okay, and we went chief or Trevor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Trevor O'Brien, Assistant Chief with the Fire Department. Our ambulance committee has been working over the last year to build out an ambulance to replace a 2009 ambulance that's still in our fleet. This committee is composed of our three lieutenants and a few shift members that have worked hard to make sure that we're getting a quality ambulance backed by service. Our ambulance call, actually, all of our calls this year were up by 295 calls from 2023, where we ran 3,217 calls, continuing to set records by approximately a 10% increase each year. This year, we ended the year with 3,512 calls. As you know, ambulance calls are, continue to be the backbone of what we do, running approximately 85% of all of our calls being EMS of some sort. Following the purchase ambulance, we're scheduled to replace ambulances after 14 to 16 years of service. We have $345,000 budgeted, which was projected by vendors last year during CIP budgeting time. Since then, like other industries, the ambulance market's kind of gone sideways, which chassis shortages, supply chain issues, labor force issues, and inflation have all had an effect on. The chassis alone went up nearly $40,000 since our first custom ambulance in 2015. According to vendors, the demand continues to exceed production abilities, and some manufacturers are currently pricing units for 2028. The last few ambulances we had, several options built in, such as power loads. We've been trying to make all of our ambulances the same, have a power cot and a power load, which helps save the backs of our responders, as well as additional radios. This time around, we will not have those options built in, but we do have those units that will take off of the 2009 and put into this new unit. Lifeline's worked hard and advised us that we would likely have our unit by the end of 2026, which was great news considering we're expecting 2028. The final price for this would be $366,433, which would be a $22,433 overage on the budget, which we discussed and approved at a subcommittee back in December, I believe. We trust Lifeline. They've provided us with a quality ambulance backed by service, which we currently have in our fleet, and pending your approval, would like to move forward with this purchase. With that, I'd entertain any questions.
I do have a question for you. So that 2009 that you're replacing, was that a four-wheel drive?
No, that's, actually, I'm glad you asked that. That's one thing we've been trying to do since 2015, is every ambulance we build has been a four-wheel-drive chassis, which has paid huge dividends for us. We're currently replacing the rear tires, you know, every winter with studded tires, just to kind of help make that more user-friendly in the snow and ice. But this would actually make all four of our ambulances now four-wheel drive.
So a nice upgrade?
Yes, absolutely.
You know, I'll actually ask one more. Salvage value on the 2009 unit, is there some value there that you can resell that?
Due to some of the new compliance standards, it would cost significant amounts of money to get that upgraded for somebody to be able to use. So we're not really anticipating much out of it, but we're exploring what our options are.
I, Mayor and Council, I have to add, other than, you know, this man and our team, men and women that worked on this process, it's been pretty humbling to watch them. They've went through this thing from the cup holders to the patient restraints, and they've built out something that's going to be, you know, the fourth custom four-wheel-drive ambulance that's going to get us where we need to go safely and get the patients where they need to go, most importantly, safely. So I'm very proud of their efforts, and he's not going to say that about himself, so I want to do that on record. So thank you, and we hope to have your support.
Well, my fear is if we put this off, how much will it cost us going forward, since we've already known of the jump in prices to this point?
Yeah, I don't have an exact number. We'd have had some preliminary conversations about maybe what we do for the next ambulance, if we, you know, try to get a purchasing contract a little sooner, so we're able to purchase it a little sooner. And we've been kind of talking to vendors about that a little bit. The hope is that the builds will catch up and things will stabilize, but again, it's probably not going to have, you know, an impact on price in terms of them going down. So we're definitely exploring that, though.
I think that's a great thought to kind of stay on top of it, to look at options going forward, because we know we've got to replace them. So if we can do something like that to help minimize the cost, I think that'd be great.
We absolutely will.
We'll just put more work doing that.
Yeah, there you go. That's all right. All right, thank you.
Or the, so are the vendors going to ask, they want the full 100% with the purchase order, or do they do as a chassis build out, you know, because it's, I mean, it's a significant chunk of money. I wasn't sure if they were looking for, you know, especially since they're two years out, or we're just trusting them to be good?
Typically, we make payment basically when it's done.
Okay.
So, yep.
So essentially, it's going to be in the 25-26 budget year.
We're seeing some things in the fire apparatus industry where there's prepayment options. Those trucks are north of $600,000. We're working right now hard on a truck that would be funded through the Rural Fire Contract that the city has with the Rural Fire Board, and those prepayment options start to pop up a little more on those bigger purchases, but it's still something that we cannot and would not do without talking to Subcommittee and full council, because it is a risk, and we have to fully understand that before we would try to do anything like that, so.
Is, even though you said it has little to no resale value, I would assume that little to no resale value is still a significant amount of money. Can you give us a ballpark figure on that?
I unfortunately don't have one. We'd have to get it assessed, honestly. And what typically happens is they'll go to, we used to ask mutual aid partners, but now that you can't recertify the ambulance, the amount of money you'd have to put into to abide by the new ambulance standards, it's no longer appealing. So you see them quite often turned into hot tub repair machines or utility repair machines, or, so they'd go on a state contract auction site, and that's honestly what ends up happening with them. The chassis are sometimes in reasonable shape, and they'll do something for a while for utility vehicles. It's the other components that, the wiring and the patient compartments that start to fail pretty rapidly at this life, at this age, so.
Thank you.
Anything else for them? Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Any other discussion from council? Any input from the public?
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And lastly, number eight, we'll look for a motion to consider approval of a funding agreement with the Connection Project, Inc., a Nebraska nonprofit corporation dedicating up to $20,000 of opiate remediation funds to help fund a temporary overnight warming shelter during the 2025 winter months, and assist in connecting people afflicted with opioid use disorder and any occurring substance use disorder, mental health conditions to appropriate resources during the day.
I just want to let you know, all the abstaining from this vote was my brother sits on the board of the Connection Project, so.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Okay, sorry. Danny, if you could lead the discussion on this one, that would be great.
Yes, thank you. So this ordinance comes before you tonight, or this funding agreement, rather, comes before you tonight in response to individuals that had been sleeping and storing personal property on public land, most recently property on public land, most recently the grounds of the library back in the summer and fall of 2024. At that time, or soon thereafter, an ordinance was prepared and presented to the council to prohibit camping or storage of personal property in parks and on other public property. As a result of the proposed ordinance, several individuals and community organizations came together with concerns about the homelessness situation and worked to find a temporary solution. One of these was the Connection Project. The Connection Project is a nonprofit organization that specializes in addiction and mental health issues. As part of this funding agreement, the Connection Project intends to set up and manage a temporary overnight warming shelter for individuals in need of housing, and they have requested up to $20,000 of funding from the city. The city has opioid remediation funds available for a use in a project such as this. This funding agreement provides for funding up to $20,000 with an initial payment of $10,000 to be made upon signing the agreement, and any additional funding up to another $10,000 to be paid as reimbursable expenditures. And the length of this contract, this is through April 1st, in terms of how long that this housing will last. So I know that there are representatives here from the Connection Project that can speak further to this, but it's my understanding that this is just a temporary measure for this winter while they work on a permanent solution. So I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I believe we have others here that can answer possibly a little better.
Rob Arrow is Executive Director of the Connection Project. Yeah, if you guys have any questions, I can definitely answer those for you. I do want to thank the community, the city council, the city staff, and all the other organizations that kind of came together. We saw a need, and we're, you know, doing our best to kind of meet that need for our community. Be able to do this well, as well as some private concerned citizens who have also pledged money and helped out, so if there's any questions.
I don't, I don't have any specific questions, but could you, could you, just for the people that are not aware of this, or the first time they've heard it, just describe a little bit of how this works?
What, the, the warming shelter?
Yes.
So the warming shelter is a temporary overnight housing for individuals who are currently unhoused. Here in our community, we do have a, I mean, for the size of our community, we have a large number of individuals who are unhoused, who don't have alternatives to, to deal with that. The warming shelter is specifically in place for, because the temperatures here are so low that it is a hazard to these individuals to be out on the street. The warming shelter will be open the hours that the Connection Project isn't open, so we're currently open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. The warming shelter will be open that alternative 12 hours, so the overnight portion, 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. The way that it would work for the individuals is that they're going to come in and they'll have to do an intake with the Connection Project prior to going over to the warming shelter, so that we can assess need, help build out a plan for them, and then also refer them to the community resources that, that they need in order to, you know, move forward with their life. It will be staffed primarily by people with lived experience as well. That's what the Connection Project is. We're a peer support center, so everybody that is on my staff, and then the majority of our board members have lived experience, so we have experienced homelessness, we have experienced substance use issues, we've experienced mental health issues. It gives us a very good insight on how to, how to deal with individuals, where they're at in this space. And then, you know, 8:00 AM, or 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, they'll be at the warming shelter, and then at 8:00 AM, they will, you know, go on to their lives, go to their employment, do things like that, or they will head down to the Connection Project where they can participate in peer-led groups and classes, as well as, you know, be referred out to services that they need.
I'll have a follow-up question on that. So also explain, so the $20,000, you're looking at 10,000 upfront and then 10 based on expenses. What expenses are you looking to get covered in this wages? What's, what's your expense that you are looking for the money for?
So predominantly, the expenses are going to be the, the cost of the, the facility. There will be rent that has to be paid out for that. Insurance will be another cost, and then the bulk of it will be for staff. That's going to be the, the largest cost. I estimate costs to do this at about $30,000. So we're, are attempting to raise, we've raised some funds, there have been some individual contributions towards this as well, to make up that remainder $10,000. But right now, it's looking like it's going to cost us $30,000 to get us through to the end of March, April 1st.
Where will the temporary shelter be at?
Temporary shelter will be at Behavioral Health Specialist Property at 900 West Norfolk Avenue. It's the, down in the basement area, is the location of the old Connection Project before we moved out in December.
And how many people will it be able to house overnight?
We are looking at, at the most, about 15. Yeah.
One.
15, 1-5. Yep. Right now, immediate need, I know there's, you know, five to 10 people that I see on a daily basis. However, we do know that if we open it up, there may be a few more individuals that come
Will there be an ability for them to leave items behind? You know, like, I've had some complaints from some people on Main Street about homeless people are coming and putting their stuff in our shop and sitting in our shop and just, I mean, you know, we've got to, we've got to address that situation for everyone, for the needs of the homeless, but also our private enterprises would like, you know, that's, that's something that they're concerned about as well.
Right. So, I, I mean, I feel like we will have the ability to store between, you know, this, the warming shelter and the Connection Project, people's personal goods, of course, you know, anything more than, than, you know, a few bags and, and the stuff you use to sleep with is going to be, you know, that's going to be something that we're going to work on with, with the individual to, you know, get it into storage or get somebody to take it. But we will be able to, the majority of the things that we see on the street from the unhoused population will be taken care of.
Great.
Through this.
And how soon do you anticipate those doors to be open, or are they?
As soon as, as, I mean, as soon as we get some funding, I can have it staffed right away. Unfortunately, I can't use my staff right now because I'm under a state, state contract through Division Behavioral Health, so I have to be careful of what I use staffing for. But once this gets funded, then I can start putting money towards those, the staffing for it, and that's the only thing we're missing out on. We already have the, the insurance policies in place. It's with the underwriter right now, it'll be effective as of today or tomorrow.
So if this funding from the city came through this evening, when would you open your doors?
Tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Travis, anything you'd like to add?
No. Yeah, Travis Webb. I sit on the Connection Project Board. I just want to basically thank everybody that's putting their time and effort into this situation. I mean, so many of us here as Norfolkans sit here and we see the, what's been going on with the homeless and stuff, and a lot of people just feel like they can't do anything, or they can do a little things, or they can't. But when we come together as a group and be able to watch all them people come together as a group and actually get some things done, it's pretty impressive. I just love to be a part of that stuff. So I just want to thank the council for their time, mostly, in that, in showing your humanity. Because often, we don't get to see that. It's about tractors and other things a lot of times, you know, and it's like to be sat here and invest in people is a big deal. And I know you guys do a lot of that throughout the day, but to invest in the people that are needing a hand up is important. So, thank you.
Thanks to both of you gentlemen and your, and the Connection Project and all of your employees for what you do. It's greatly appreciated, and thank you for filling that void for Norfolk.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all.
If, Councilman Aaron's, if we would approve this tonight, how quickly would they be able to have their money, their $10,000?
I'm going to defer that to Randy, or... Randy, did you hear the question?
No, I did not.
So if this would happen to get approved this evening, how soon would they get their funds?
We could make those funds available tomorrow if they need them that quick.
Thank you. Anyone else have any input or comment on this?
Evening. Troy Euler. Live here in Norfolk, own businesses, Madison County Commissioner, and I also sit on the Board of Directors for, you have Behavioral Health Services. It's one of the boards I sit on outside of my duties as county commissioner. Just like to echo kind of what Travis and Rob said. It was amazing to see our group to come together. We have a lot of entities in our community that help people, just in general. What I found in my time as commissioner, as many of you probably as councilmen, they don't always work together or on the same page. They're all out there, a piece of the pie, right? So it was, it was great to sit down with a roomful of about probably 20 people, and everybody worked together on trying to figure this out. You know, it comes down to humanity, right? As a business owner that sees these homeless people, I'm one of those, I generally rule of thumb, let them warm up for about a couple hours, and ask them to kind of move on their way. It's not good for business, I get that. But on the other hand, when you, that time sent in your, in your business and you ask a few questions, you know, I would say a majority of these people don't have drug problems, for say, they have mental health issues. And our state has dropped the ball on mental health like no other. And having a family member that was bipolar, paranoid, schizophrenic, about manic depression, when she wasn't on her medication, it was terrible. Okay? And that's what I'm seeing with these people that come in. So the Connection Project is, is a great organization because they're not a medical facility, they're a pure organization. They're able to get in and help these people because they don't have to follow the medical rules, okay? So they can talk to the husband, they can talk to a child, you know, a sip of these people. So I think going with the Connection Project and allowing them to do this, this will be a huge step in moving forward. It's a lot on their plate, Rob's, Rob's an amazing guy, I don't know where he gets his energy, but he is invested. I've hired some people that Rob has sent my way. He's helped them with resumes, he's helped them with job plans, and I think that's the goal of this, is to get these people from being homeless. Are you going to survive that 100% of the time? Probably not, because some of these people do need medication, but they need advocates. I'm, I'm a guardian in my spare time for a 63-year-old gentleman. He's got the mentality about a 15, 16-year-old. I have to work the system for him for his benefit. I have trouble working the state system. Now you take somebody that's got mental health issues, and they're homeless and don't have a computer, this is, this is the avenue. Rob does that for these people, his staff does that. So the other fortunate thing is, is it's a good opportunity to use the opioid money. In hindsight, with the, with the county, we didn't receive a lot of funds. It was going to be a tracking nightmare for the small amount of money we were getting, so we did give it back to the region. Possibly in the future, if this works out for a long-term plan, I may be asking the region to, to maybe ear notch some of that money back to us for something, for a long-term shelter. So, thank you for your time, guys. Any questions? I sat in the meetings, I mean, it went really well.
Any other comments? Further discussion with council? If not, ask for your vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Arns, McCarthy, Grandquist, Jensen, Langy, Beckman, abstaining, Webb, motion carries.
And with that vote, that is, this January 6, 2025 meeting is adjourned.